Draft general plan and discuss and provide comments as appropriate. Could we please have a brief staff report?
Thank you, Chair Jones. My name is Troy Evangello. I'm the Advanced Planning Manager. And I have with me today our consultant team, Ramey &amp; Associates. They're going to be delivering the presentation shortly. I just wanted to quickly introduce them and kind of set the stage for what we're looking to do tonight. So, we're going to be giving you an overview of two separate items. First off, the general plan, which is going to set the stage for the next item, the zoning code. And you'll notice the majority of the focus of the general plan discussion is going to be on the land use, which again directly relates to the implementation we're working through with the zoning code. And I'll also share that this has been a long time in the making. About four years of staff time and meetings have gone into creating the draft general plan that we'll be sharing with you tonight. And with that, I'd like to introduce Eric Yerkovich with Ramey &amp; Associates to deliver the presentation.
Good evening, chairperson and commissioners. It's great to be here tonight and back in front of you. I'm going to figure out which direction I point this. There we go. My name is Eric Yerkovich. I'm a principal at Ramey &amp; Associates. We have been working with Culver, the city of Culver City since 2019 to develop the general plan itself. We're also been working on the zoning code, which Troy mentioned we're going to talk about in a little bit more detail in the draft zoning code framework this evening. The general plan itself really sets the 20-year vision for the community, establishes the pattern of future development across the city, and then provides policy direction across 13 different chapters of the general plan. Now, to implement the specific pattern of development identified in the general plan, we have the zoning code, which establishes the developments, the specific development standards, permitting and processing associated with those development applications. Our team is also currently working on an environmental impact report, which will be released, that it evaluates and discloses potential impacts of the full buildout of the general plan itself. And both the zoning code and the environmental impact report are due to be released this year. This graphic shows you a little bit about the simplified process that we went through with the community over the last number of years. So, we kicked off the update with a discovery phase where we reviewed existing conditions with, in the community. We looked at existing policies and programs, and we summarized and published a series of existing conditions reports. We then worked with the community, the general plan advisory committee, to really understand what you love about Culver City and what you'd like to see in the future. That helped us to draft the vision state, the community vision statement, and the core values that are essential to the general plan itself. And I'll talk about it in a little bit. We then moved into a phase of the project where we looked at different land use and mobility alternatives, and we assessed the trade-offs of those and had a series of community discussions about what different land use patterns, what different mobility patterns are like in the city. We then pivoted to developing a series of policies, packaging those into a series of policy frameworks, which we published and went through a number of stakeholder, community, and council meetings about. All that work really fed into the public review draft general plan. Now, that general plan was released late last year and was out in the end of September through the end of November. During that time, we solicited feedback on the general plan itself, hosting for in-person and hybrid meetings, as well as popping up at Fiesta La Biona. We also received numerous comments from community members emailed. We had an online public comment forum, so we collected a number of those comments. A summary of that engagement is now posted at the picture culvercity.com website for those who are interested. And this is just a few of the pictures from one of our in-person open houses that we hosted back in October. Now, central to the general plan itself is the vision for the future. So, during that listening and visioning phase, we worked with you to develop a vision for the general plan. The vision really provides the umbrella for the general plan itself. It really articulates what we're trying to achieve in the future. And I'm not going to read all of the vision itself, but we highlighted a few key pieces of it. So, strong social and economic fabric, a leader in the region, and a commitment to equitable planning are some of the themes that we heard consistently throughout the process. And during that process, we heard from community members across the city about the belief in creativity and innovation, compassion and community, equity and inclusion, and sustainability. And while the vision tells us where we want to be in the future, and the policies and actions themselves tell us what we're going to do in the future, the visions tell us a little bit about how we're going to do that work moving forward. So, those are key values that have been embedded into the plan itself. Now, the state of California requires all cities and counties to have a general plan, and it requires them to do eight mandatory elements. Those are the eight that are listed on top of the screen there. But the state also provides communities with a lot of flexibility about the topics that you take on as part of the general plan itself. So, this general plan includes topics such as greenhouse gas reduction, arts and culture, and economic development. So, things that are more unique to the city of Culver City. Now, we took all those mandatory elements and all those optional topics and elements, and we organized them into five overarching parts within the general plan itself. Picture our people, our community, how we move, our environment, and then implementation. Tonight, we're really focused on the land use and community design element of the general plan, and that is included within Picture Our Community. And Picture Our Community really focuses on the physical design of Culver City itself and includes the other elements around parks and open space, infrastructure, and economic development. Now, the land use and community design element is really a cornerstone element of every general plan. It provides a basis of land use policy, but then it also ripples through each of the elements themselves. It provides a foundation for your parks and open space network, for your mobility network, and it provides a framework for how you grow your housing in the future and becomes the basis for your housing element, your adopted six-cycle housing element. Now, each general plan element really starts with an articulation of what we are trying to achieve through the implementation of that element. Those come from numerous conversations with the community about the values and the outcomes that folks wanted to see in the general plan itself. So, each element starts with this framing. So, for the land use element, we heard about maintaining that walkable environment, continuing to create healthy and safe residential neighborhoods, making sure to provide a diverse range of housing types for a series of different income levels and family types within the community, about maintaining a positive supportive relationships for businesses and the creative economy within Culver City, creating a sustainable and resilient built environment, and ensuring that there's a collaboration between the city and its partners, property owners, and developers. One of the defining parts of this update of the general plan is the focus and the city's continued focus on creating walkable mixed-use places. So, these mixed-use places really intend to bring jobs and housing together with amenities, parks and open space, mobility improvements, really to create vibrant, walkable areas that help us meet our climate goals, that help us support non-auto travel, and to really create those great places where we want to, where we want to be. These mixed-use areas are spread throughout the city in the form of activity centers, mixed-use neighborhoods, as well as mixed-use districts. This map really shows that, kind of that illustration of where those are throughout the neighborhoods. And you can see those mixed-use places around downtown, around the E-line station, in Fox Hills, and in other locations around the community. Complementing that kind of focus on those, the conversation particularly around the zoning code framework itself. First, we really wanted to focus the land use and transportation and make sure they're well-connected and linked together. The goal of the element is really to guide growth and development into locations that coordinate those land use and transportation improvements that you see in the mobility element, really to create those walkable, bikeable places with high-quality transit that helps us reduce reliance on automobile travel. Next, and consistent with that, is this concept of transit-oriented communities. So, transit-oriented communities are places that are designed really to help people drive less, to help people use multimodal options, offering a mix of uses, higher building intensities, more public amenities, affordable housing, and then bringing together those mobility improvements within a half-mile or so of those high-quality transit locations. As part of this effort as well, there's a large focus on housing production in the city. So, how could we meet our regional housing needs allocation through the six-cycle housing element? So, the land use and community design element, for example, has a number of policies that support the transition from more of the single-use commercial and industrial districts into mixed-use districts overall. And you'll see that through the implementation of the land use planning. And then finally, the general plan also looks for opportunities to increase housing within both the single-family neighborhoods, as well as the lower-density multifamily neighborhoods, adding accessory dwelling units, duplexes, and then multifamily in those lower and moderate-density multifamily neighborhoods. So, a critical part of every general plan land use element is the land use designations map. It's one of the main requirements from the state of California associated with general plans themselves. It requires that cities identify the mix of uses and the intensities that are allowed on every single parcel of land within Culver City. The map is really a graphic representation of the land use policy contained within the general plan itself. And it focuses not on what's existing now, but on the desired future outcome in the 25-year time horizon of the general plan. And this map is also used as the basis for things like the housing element and the housing element sites inventory. So, each parcel is given a land use designation within the general plan, which also, which really provides that vision for the parcel in the future. Each designation specifies the allowed uses and then the standards for development density, if it's residential, or development intensity, if it's a non-residential site. The general plan is broad in its definition, with the detail being developed as part of the zoning code update. And this map itself sort of zooms in, so you can see that map a little bit better. An essential component of every element of the general plan is the policy framework. And the policy framework really includes three key things: the goals, the policies, and then the implementation actions. Those goals are really a general expression of community values. And in the land use element, those cover things like citywide growth management, district mixed-use and residential designations, as well as community and site design standards. You can see an example of one of those goals and sets of policies focused on community and site design. And then, within each element, the goals and policies are followed by a more detailed set of implementation actions. And implementation action really is a specific program or capital improvement or activity that the city is going to take on. In, on the screen now are just a few examples that are included within the land use element itself. So, these include ordinance and code amendments, like the zoning code amendment and the objective design standards, which are currently underway in the city. They include future studies and plans around things like street design standards and physical improvements, like wayfinding and visual design around your transit centers. And then, in total, the land use element has about 13 of those particular actions. And then finally, for the general plan presentation tonight, just on the screen are our next steps for the process overall. In January, I mentioned this, we released a summary of the community engagement that had been done back in the fall around the public release of the general plan. In March, we aim to release a comments matrix that, with staff, that responds to the community comments and recommends specific changes to the public review draft general plan based on public feedback. And then, the goal for the general plan is to have hearings for it to start in August. On the environmental impact report, we'll be recirculating the notice of preparation starting tomorrow. And the purpose of that recirculation is to cover the zoning code update along with the general plan in the EIR, to make sure that they're both consistent and covered by that environmental document. So, as part of that recirculation, we wanted to make sure that the zoning code was covered, and we'll be doing a separate and new scoping meeting for that, which will be held on March the 7th, with the goal still to release the EIR shortly thereafter in March. With that, I want to thank you for having us here this evening and look forward to hearing your comments tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I think before we do clarifying questions, I want to hear if there are public comments, please.
Yes, Chair, we have four.
Three minutes each, please.
Let me just pull up the screen. A minute.
It's not a, it's not a public here.
Three minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Our first speaker is Andrew Flores.
Good evening. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to comment. I'm concerned kind of at the strength and or weakness of the public engagement over the past four years, as well as more recently. One of the things I definitely heard while listening to the updated report is I heard a lot of the voice of the consultant, and I don't know if I heard enough of the voice of the community. I know there's definitely an echo in the policies of four years ago when the vision was established, but there's a lot more tension, contention, and debate within the community about the densities that are being proposed, and I don't hear those being addressed, spoken to, or potentially commented on when there are opportunities. Also, when it comes to kind of outreach for this opportunity, I don't feel like a website post, a newsletter mention, and a social media post are enough. The general plan update, as well as a comprehensive zoning code update, are once-in-a-generation type of events, and to kind of see a current turnout is disappointing. It definitely seems like the goal is to approve the project and to approve these documents, rather than to build relationships within the community. And I did have potential solutions, because there are other opportunities moving forward. There are, there are specific plans that will be started in the winter now, as opposed to this winter, they'll be next winter. I definitely do think it's important, when deadlines are stated and self-imposed, they be kept. I definitely think it's important that work be shown. Over the course of four years, there have been a significant number of engagement and in public comments, and sometimes the red is not clear enough to what the residents or the community has spoken about. And I know we'll get that opportunity to read and hear more in the response to comments, but I definitely do feel like that could have been done sooner or stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Brogan, followed by Jack Walter.
Chair and members of the commission, my name is Kevin Brogan. I represent the Vickers La Biona owners who own 45 acres within the city of Culver City that is currently part of the Inglewood Oil Field, but as no doubt the commission knows, that will be amortized out at some point. The proposed zoning ordinance and planning, as I understand it, has these 45 acres set as R1. Our suggestion, given the need for housing, is that it be deemed multifamily, at least within the concept of the general plan and within the concept of the zoning code. You'll hear from me again later, so I'll waive the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Walter. Mr. Walter, registered to speak. He's not here, and he's not registered online, so we can circle back. And he's also registered for A2. And our next speaker is Hillary Haran.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I agree that not enough community feedback is being discussed by the, the planning commission. I haven't heard very much positive feedback from the community. I live in Fox Hills, and anyone I've spoken to is opposed to the plan for building these six-story buildings. And we're concerned that it's going to interfere with the flow of, you know, the breezes from, from the ocean that come our way. And just, it would just, um, be an ugly building, like, well, not ugly, but the tick-tock is an atrocity, in my opinion. That building is horrendous. I don't, I think they could try to work on building on the north side of Slosen and try to keep things uniform with what Fox Hills currently has with three stories. It would be more consistent. I don't know if much more time I have, but I really enjoy walking in the office park. I love the, that there's not too much traffic in the area. And, and getting to school, driving kids to school in the mornings is going to be really challenging. And the reality is, most people are car-reliant. And to pretend that everyone's going to be riding bicycles and not have to use cars, and I mean, that's what they're basically basing their, their development on, is this idea that they, they don't need parking spaces, because everyone's going to bike. And that's just not practical, and it's not real. So, anyway, that's my input. And I, I hope you'll consider a resident of Fox Hills' opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Jack Walter? We had skipped you, but you can, you can turn right now.
Hi, are we speaking? I just walked in because of traffic. How you doing? I'm speaking on the, pardon me? For the general plan and the zoning, I just want to express my support. I am a property owner, stakeholder, in the Fox Hills area. And I believe that that area, we're very familiar with it, is a very good area, a good choice of the, your consultants to pick that as a high, the high-density area, to put the highest-density housing. The area is the center of activity between, alongside the freeways. It's very convenient, and it's very low-density. The nicest thing about it is it's convenient to every place. And if any develop, when development comes in there, it's not displacing any housing, not tearing down any housing, not moving any residents out. It's all commercial area, so those people will be relocated, their businesses will be. But I, I believe that this is the right area to put the high-density as well. I believe that as the general plan is written, it should be codified. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers, Chair.
Thanks. Let's, I think we could do kind of questions and, and feedback, but maybe organize it by, let's start with land use and then everything else, because I think land use is what the presentation focused on. Maybe we have more comments on that, but we can start with Commissioner Menthe.
As I remember how to work my mic, well, happy Valentine's to everybody. Lovely to see you all here, where else would you want to be on an evening like tonight? I did have a few questions for, I don't know if it's for staff, but probably for the consultant. So, let me just start. The, I understand there's likely to be a metro expansion down Sepulveda Corridor that could actually come down Sepulveda, depending where they put it. Is, does that form any part of the general plan as it is now? Has that since been contemplated?
I'm familiar with the project you're talking about, and the, our, our transportation director, Diana, has sort of been the lead on that one, looking at future expansions for it. Still very conceptual at this point, so I don't think it was solidified enough for us to include in the plan at this stage.
Yeah, the Sepulveda Transit Corridor Study, right, connecting the 405 North and the Valley South. It, I, I think the current vision is for it to stop north of Culver City, before it hits Culver City, with the possibility of a future expansion in the future, right? So, I think the current study, it lands north of Culver City.
Yeah, I, I was contacted about going south, so I was trying to figure that out, right? Sort of a comment about way this is presented, to the extent the public looks at this, many of them are concerned about their own parcels, their own property. And one of the, one of the issues that I think people confront when they try to look at the new general plan and the old one is the old one, the current one, right, generally speaks of units per parcel. And the new one speaks of units per acre. So, it's very difficult for people to look at their property and figure out how it affects them individually. If it's possible to put together some sort of a guide or a legend or something that allows people to figure it out, so that, my guess is, most people looking at it will discover that even though it now, they now see this much larger number, that in fact, the number of units allowable on their parcel really hasn't changed significantly. And that's, so if we could do that as part of the presentation, that'd be very helpful. Question about the comments. I know we had comments. I was out at the meeting in October, and, or was it November, but thank you. Have any of the comments been included in the draft yet? Or is this still the draft that we had some months ago?
This is the public release draft, and so the comments we've received are on this draft. They have not been included.
Okay.
We, we have a summary of them, and we are preparing responses to them.
Can you give us a sense as to just how many we're looking at? I mean, there's thousands, hundreds, dozens?
I think it's somewhere around the order of about 400, kind of unique comments.
Okay. And what's the, the general plan for handling that? Is it all going to happen in March?
Right. We'll have the responses to the comments in March.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director. Just to make sure everybody knows, there is an engagement summary report already posted on the website. So, the general, general high-level comments that we received during the public comment period is out there, and then what will be released next month is a detailed matrix to each comment. But I, I want to make sure there has been an, you know, initial summary of what we've heard in the public engagement in the fall.
It's only nine pages, too. It's nice. Yeah.
And we had a speaker here who asked a very interesting question about the oil field and his designation. Is there a, can someone briefly speak to why the oil field was given that particular designation?
So, we've kept the existing designations for the oil field. In the current general plan, it's designated as open space. We're keeping that designation as open space. And there was actually a mismatch sort of in the current zoning code, where it's designated as R1, single-family residential. And we've, again, kept that mismatch moving forward. And I, I think we're deferring to other outside processes for determining the future use of that, not this process particularly.
What is that outside process?
I guess maybe a direction from city council, legal?
So, again, Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director. So, the commission and community are probably aware there's an oil field termination ordinance. That process needs to- needs to run its course, so to speak. There's been a settlement agreement that was recently agreed to by the parties in the city. And those activities, I believe, we will end in 2029, 2028, 2029. So we need for that to occur. We do anticipate, and the city acknowledges this in its public statements about the oil termination ordinance, that, you know, and in the future, there will be a conversation as to the, the potential uses that could go on that property.
I'll also add that we, we have identified the Inglewood Oil Field as a focused future study site. So there's about five different areas of the city that we've identified for a future focused study. Fox Hills, the Hayden Tract, Biona Creek, and two different portions of the Inglewood Oil Field, one within the city boundary and one outside of it. So those are all areas where we said we, we understand there's a lot of things to consider in planning for these areas, and we've identified them as a focus area in the future to look at.
Thank you. I did have a question about that. I, I wanted to make sure I understood the emails I had received about Fox Hills and the focus area there. Is that going forward, or was there money not received and it's being delayed? Or something in the middle?
Yeah, so we, I, we did receive a letter saying that the original grant that was awarded is on hold, on pause, and that they're advocating the governor's office to continue the funding for that project. However, we do have funding approved from the city council for both the Fox Hills specific plan and the Hayden Tract specific plan. So they would be moving forward regardless of whether or not we receive that grant funding.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, well, those are my initial comments on that, thank you.
Commissioner Barba?
Thank you, Chair Jones. If I could, if I could ask from the advanced planning manager, can you clarify? So the map says for the Inglewood Oil Field, it says open space, but then you said there is a...
Zoning map.
Yeah. So clarify what that disconnect means, because that's an important piece for people that want that to remain open space.
Sure. And I'll just take a step back and say, in a larger context, there are lots of areas in the city which are sort of mismatched. They might have an industrial general plan designation and a commercial or residential zoning designation. So these sort of mismatches happen and we try to reconcile those as we go through this process. In the case of the Inglewood Oil Fields, that is a, again, a particular process that's working its way through lawsuits and whatnot, that we said we're, we're not changing anything from the status quo. So we are going to keep the general plan designation open space, we are going to keep the zoning designation, single-family residential, and sort of defer to direction from council in the future on what to do with that site.
So I guess my follow-up question, and this is for everyone to understand. If that property owner shows to build single-family homes in some future date, under the zoning code, could they do that on that land?
This gets into sort of new state law that's come out with, you know, I think previously the general plan used to be the guiding document when it came to anything but specifically residential. And recent legislation, and I'll let Christina jump in here, has identified, I believe, either document, that either your zoning code or your general plan can be, if it's, if it calls out residential as a use, it could potentially be allowed. That's about as far as my understanding goes. I don't have, you know, the details at my fingertips on how that, again, new state legislation, or how it would be applied.
That's correct. I mean, depending on what, if there were a proposed development here that involved residential, we would have to look at whether it would qualify for the laws that Troy mentioned, which would allow it to rely on the, the single-family zoning that exists on the site today. This is all speculative. There is no development application that we're aware of. But at this point, like Troy said, you, given the, the process leading up to the settlement agreement, which was signed in December, we did not propose, or staff did not propose any changes to the, to the existing general plan or, or zoning code designations for its properties.
Thank you. And I know these are difficult questions, so I've just, I want to make sure that the public understands kind of to a certain degree. Is there any other areas in the cities where those inconsistencies are being, remain between the general plan and the zoning code?
I think we fixed or reconciled most of them. And, again, lots of different, just weird ways that maps are drawn, or inconsistencies that have been around for quite some time. So we did a, kind of a reconciliation process, and we fixed a large number of, of properties in, in taking into account what's on the ground as well, trying to make things as conforming as possible. But I can't recall any other areas where we purposefully left inconsistency in the plan.
Great, thank you. Do you want me to go into my comments, or those were, yes, my questions?
Let's just do questions, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Roman?
My only question is just the, what is the difference between the community engagement and meetings and things that we've been having so far and the hearings that happened in August?
The hearings that will happen in August will be for actual review and adoption. So these would be the public hearings associated, beginning with the general plan, before the Planning Commission, who makes a recommendation to the city council, who approves, hopefully, or denies, the general plan. And then those hearings would be followed by a set of hearings for the zoning code.
Okay, I see. So up until now, community meetings, et cetera, et cetera, those will be PH hearings, public hearings that happen here in chambers?
Correct. And just so for the community knows, we're also next Monday, the 26th, having a very similar conversation as we're having tonight with all of you, with the city council, to provide an update to them.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Commissioner Carter?
No questions at this time, but I wanted to thank everyone who, who came in to give comments. Thanks.
I just have one clarifying question, kind of about the difference between policies, goals, and implementation actions. And I have one, like, illustrative example. So like, I saw in the parks element, there was a policy of, like, buying parcels to, and I wish I had it in front of me, but it was like buying small parcels to make little parks or something, which I was like, oh, that's great. And then it does, there's no implementation action that says to do that. Maybe that's fine. But I, but what's, what does that mean in practice? How is the policy used if there's not a corresponding implementation action, or what is, what does that end up meaning?
Whether it's a capital improvement project or a, a planning entitlement, there'll be a staff report, and those policies come into play where they need to make findings to talk about how it's consistent. So if a particular capital improvement is coming in to, you know, fix a sewer system or fix one of the parks, that's where we reference those policies to make sure it's consistent with whatever the direction is in those policies. So it, that's the way it's tied in, and it sort of, again, filters out, because we have all these elements that touch on all these different aspects of how we operate the city, those policies will work their way into all of the, the projects and procedures and policies of the city moving forward. As far as implementation actions, those are specific projects or implementation that we are looking to do in a specified time period. So you'll notice we have items for implementation within one to five years, five to 10, 10 to 20. Again, this is a 20-year plan. So, again, that's sort of a rough working plan for the city to move forward, you know, in the next five years, the next 10 years. And, again, the, the policies, why they might not be referenced explicitly in those implementation actions, the actions are meant to help facilitate implementation of the policy.
Chair Jones, I would just say, too, if there's any other, if there's a, what you feel is a disconnect or something's missing between a policy and implementation action, please feel free to forward that to us and make sure that there's just not some sort of oversight or something like that.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we can give our substantive comments. Commissioner Menthee, we'll go in the same order.
Well, sure, thank you. So I also want to thank everyone who's worked on this document. You know, it's been a long process to get here. This is a, I don't know how common it is for it to take as long as it has, but I don't think it's all that common to have a pandemic in the middle of your general plan update. You know, there's, there's a sense in which sort of B.C. and A.D., these things started before the pandemic and they followed on afterward. And it's sometimes hard to sort of wrap your head around what people were thinking in 2019, because the world seems so different as we're getting into 2024. And I think there's a number of, of policy items here that feel dated already, which is interesting, because they're supposed to last for the 20 years. But, you know, it's going to feel dated in 20 years anyway, so I'm not sure how important that is. The comments of public engagement do matter. You know, the public was not very engaged when this started and very quickly became disengaged because of the pandemic. So I think the level of public engagement has been very spotty. And I feel like what we've had over the last few months with this general plan going around has been the most robust public engagement we've actually had on the general plan for quite some time. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what all these comments look like and seeing how thorough the comments were and how thorough the responses were, because I think that's really how we get to judge whether or not we've really listened to the community on this general plan. This, this ends up being the process. And it wasn't necessarily supposed to be that way, but that's, that's, that's what happens when you shut down the world for a couple of years and try to come back and pick up the pieces. You know, other than that, I suppose, if I had a chance to ask a, a general question, I would throw this out to you at some future time, is I think there are people who would like to know, if I was to compare the existing general plan with the one that's coming, what are the broad statements that you would want to make to the public about how this differs? Because it's not just what, you know, is new, but like, what is it that we are doing? How are we pivoting, if at all? And I know that some of it's just numbers, like more people. I understand what, we're looking at maybe, maybe 20,000 more people here, which would be a 50% increase in population, which would be the first significant increase in population since World War II. So, you know, that's big. But beyond that data, like, how does it feel different? How does this look different? Might be interesting to have that as part of the presentation to the public, because I think the public is going to be interested in seeing how that vision has changed. So I think that makes it easier to buy into a new vision. You know, I've seen documents from the re-envisioning of the downtown in 1991, and I sort of urge everyone to look at those. It's fascinating. Especially fascinating because it was all about accommodating vehicles and expanding roads and accommodating vehicles, also expanding sidewalks. It was a very different vision than what we've seen over the last few years. In many ways, a lot of what's being done is undoing what people did in the last general plan. So just having a, a sense of that would be useful. Otherwise, those are my comments, thank you. I look forward to seeing this come back here, it looks like, a couple more times.
Commissioner Barba?
Thank you, and definitely huge thanks to Ray Meehan Associates and all your hard work from staff. I have been engaged in the general planning since 2019, when you did those very robust, and sadly, I don't think most people were here, except maybe you, when you did those very robust trainings about different topics, if anyone remembers. And it was this amazing vision that was hopeful and really set a vision for what Culver City can become. And I want to remind us all that we are limited when we don't envision big things. Because going into my comments, I think the number one thing that I want to comment on is that, that it's, the land use map is, doesn't seem like a huge improvement over the last one. Land use restrictions have a significant consequence on housing affordability, on urban sprawl, on community diversity. By restricting developments in high-demand areas like Culver City, which we all know it is, right? It's very hard to buy a home here. One, 1,200-square-foot home can cost like $2 million. It exacerbates housing affordability and the homelessness crisis. Makes it difficult for low- and middle-income families to find housing in our community. Also, when we restrict housing development via our land use, we are going to increase the likelihood that housing is developed in our open spaces, which leads to sprawl, which leads to more vehicle miles traveled, more drain, our, our infrastructure of roads, which leads to more emissions. Also, limiting housing supply through land use restrictions hinders economic growth, because we, the city, has had all of these 10,000 jobs that have been created in our city in the last decade or so. But I think we have low hundreds of housing units, maybe, maybe 1,000 multifamily housing units created in the same time. So all of this, who does it impact most? It's marginalized communities. It's communities that can already afford to live here. And I think we're also stifling creativity and inviting more development, more housing development in our city. So that's my general comment about the land use map. I wish it allowed for more housing. And then, separate, I, I would really hope the commission would be willing to make a recommendation to the council to align the zoning code with the general plan on all land, because, particularly because of what council said, that there is state law that could say, if it says it in either way, in either place, that may be an allowable use. So just as a recommendation. Thank you.
Vice Chair Roman?
I don't have quite the comments. I would definitely echo what Commissioner Menthee and Barba have said. I think the alignment is an important thing because of the fact that it provides some level of vision and certainty for what's coming in the future. When you leave it open and ambiguous, it provides opportunity for something to happen that we weren't expecting. You know, and if housing density is important and land use says that we should build a dense multifamily community in the oil fields, and we don't have that alignment, and it says R1, all of a sudden we get R1 neighborhoods, and now we can't build multifamily because it doesn't align with the rest of the community that somehow slid in there because there was this misalignment. That, I understand there's issues, but I would echo that same, same concern. Related to the feedback, I think the one thing that I would say, you know, when you look up the... the one thing that I would say, you know, when you look up that community engagement summary report, you know, out of the 40-plus thousand people that live in the city of Culver City, 70 participants were represented in those meetings and 116 online comments and responses. I recognize there's 400, maybe individual comments right now. Maybe that comes from a different, maybe another subset that's not represented there, but that seems like a very small amount of people that are providing input on such an important, important thing, much less reading into the demographics, which skews in very specific ways, right? That I won't comment on. So I think, hopefully, during public hearings, I mean, at this point, we've moved past this, that phase of the, of the update process. And hopefully, there's a way to get more of the community to come out and provide comment during the public hearing process. Although, you know, as somebody who goes through projects for a living, it's always that comment that comes at the end and that throws a wrench into what you did in your design and you wish that they had shown up early on, right? So I hate to say that it probably will provide a lot of wrenches to maybe the process, having a lot of public comment come at the, in August, when we're supposed to be delivering the update shortly thereafter.
Thanks. Commissioner Carter?
Hi, thank you. So on my way here tonight, I was going to drive because I thought this meeting might run late, and I didn't want to bike home too late at night. And I got a text from a friend and they're like, you can't, they're like, farragot, a small road. They're like, it's blocked, you can't do it. So I had to bike here, and thank God I did because I would not have gotten here. And I just, the system we have, not just in Culver City, but as Culver City, as part of L.A. and many cities, it's broken. Like, I saw, you know, I see it, we see it every day at 5:00 P.M. It's just broken. And the information we had, you know, that put us where we are has been disproven. Like, study after study comes out that says, you know, we, they used to think making more roads alleviated traffic, but that's been proven to not work. And with, I see a lot about safety and sustainability as a mission, as one of several mission statements. And I look forward to seeing more details to, to affirm that and make that real, because we, we really need it. I think, looking forward, it just has to be a crucial part of the conversation along with housing. And can we just take R1 off? Like, if it's, if something's to be determined as zoning in the oil fields, can we just say to be determined? Because I think it's confusing. It does seem like this could accidentally end up R1 because of, like, a technical, like, an oversight. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you for all the work. And that's all.
Thank you. I'll echo the comments of the rest of the commission. I think, I think first, first of all, just to thank you for your work on this document. I think that, you know, I did look at the previous general plan elements, and of course, they, you know, didn't have great illustration technology back then. There's, you know, it looks like it was typed on a typewriter. But, but also, you know, they don't have like a big statement of values that, that looks to the future. And that's, I think, exciting to see. And it's exciting to read it kind of throughout the document. I want to focus my comments on two specific things. One, first, and this is real specific to, to the land use, is the MU1 designation has a density of 35 dwelling units per acre. And one of the things that we heard kind of throughout, I feel like I, we were hearing it, you know, since the, this draft came out, and then before that as well, in the housing element discussion, is that there needs to be new density on commercial corridors. And from my understanding, you know, what you can build in MU1, once it's passed, is kind of identical to what you can build on those streets, you know, two years ago. That it's 35 dwelling units per acre for mixed use. There are potential density bonuses. But it's, you know, I want, I actually want to show a screenshot, and I sent it to Madam Secretary before the meeting, of some apartments, some small apartments on small lots in this designation. So this is on, I'll give you the addresses. Let's see. 11535 Washington, 11601 Washington, and 11605 Washington. So this is in the MU1 designation, or the, you know, the future MU1 designation. These are buildings that were built decades ago that are, you know, in the range of like 40 to 50 dwelling units per acre. So higher than, than the base density that's allowed today under the mixed use ordinance, and higher than, so that building on the far right there, and then those two on the left, on either side of that street. So those are all between 40 and 50 dwelling units per acre. And they're not, you know, there's no, there's no commercial component. They're all, they're all residential, very in line with what's in the neighborhood. You know, they're the same height and, and massing as like the single-family homes that are on that street behind it. And those wouldn't be allowed under the base density of what's proposed for MU1. Now, this is, from my understanding of the map, the most frontage on commercial corridors in the city in terms of length is on MU1. And it's, and it's, not only is it not being, you know, upzoned at all in this, those buildings would not be, you know, able to, able to be built. Maybe under density bonus, if you included some affordable housing, but maybe that wouldn't be, maybe that wouldn't be feasible, commercially feasible. I, so I would propose asking, recommending that that density be, be raised. I don't know if I, I guess, should I, can I make a motion to that extent, or maybe we can have discussion? Should we, if I were to make a motion, would that come before discussion? Or should we have discussion first?
Well, I think we should, you should have a conversation about that and make a summary recommendation if there's an interest in increasing the density. One thing I do want to just caution the commission, I don't, we, particular conversation about particular properties that have not been noticed. You know, I understand this is for illustrative purposes, but we have just given addresses. So I really want to caution us to talk about this in a very general framework corridor sort of way.
Thank you.
So, but I think, Troy, if you could just articulate a little bit about the 35, if we're talking about the MU1, the 35 dwelling units per acre, and then the thought process about the different incentives that typically could be layered on top of that density. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So, yes, the 35 dwelling units per acre does cover a lot of our commercial corridors. Some of it has been increased. Some of the larger parcels have, we've increased to MU2, 50 dwelling units per acre is the base density. But a lot of it is still 35 dwelling units per acre. And there's some rationale behind that. A lot of these lots, similar to the ones that were demonstrated, are 5,000 square foot or less. You know, that's probably the size of like a single-family home lot, traditional single-family home lot. So smaller densities are typically proposed on smaller lots. That's a general theme you'll find throughout the general plan. But I also want to preview a point, which you're going to see some slides on in the next presentation when we get to the zoning code. But 35 dwelling units per acre is really the, the base that you have on, on these corridors. And as you'll see in our upcoming presentation, existing today, on the books today, in our zoning code, you could get over 100 dwelling units per acre on, on these future MU1 lots. So, you know, we start with the 35 dwelling units per acre, and then a, trying to think which, there's a, there's a series of bonuses that each provide an additional density. So adding workforce housing turns that 35 units per acre to 50 units per acre. Being located in a transit priority area, which most of the city and most of the corridors are, increases that to 65 units per acre. Adding micro-units increases it to 75 units per acre. And then the state density bonus allows a 50% on top of your new 75 dwelling unit per acre base gets you to 113. I know these numbers because I just ran through this, this calculation, you know, today, looking through it. So, again, not to get too in the weeds with it, but just to illustrate the point that, yes, 35 dwelling units is the, the base density, which does get you, on these types of lots would be like a three, maybe four units without using any type of, of bonus. But there are avenues to really increase that density. And we have projects that have utilized those today. There's some larger mixed-use projects on these corridors, on Washington Boulevard, that have used these incentives that we have in the zoning code to reach those higher densities. So it is there. It's sort of built in. It's a very technical process, which, as, as we illustrated, as part of the plan of the general plan implementation, is to look at revising these new density bonuses and kind of recalibrating it to our new higher densities that are found throughout the city. But your point is taken. That 35 dwelling units per acre is the same as what is allowed today. And without any incentives, it's a very much a smaller type project.
And I would just articulate, Steph, if you could pull up the previous slide that we had before we showed the, the street view. We do have a number of proposed development applications. To my recollection, all affordable housing along these corridors, all of which are being built at higher densities because they're affordable projects, they're on transport, transportation priority areas. So that is occurring. And, and, you know, depending on the type of streamlining legislation they're using there, they could be nondiscretionary. So that is happening. This is by no means to deter your conversation. I just wanted to be informative. Commissioner Barbara, you particularly raised regarding residential. I just want to be clear about this. The image to the left shows, you know, currently 57% of the city's land area permits residential by right, and 43% does not. If the general plan and subsequent zoning code alignment is made, that jumps significantly to 82%. And that is all to accommodate, you know, the, some of the population numbers that were addressed. And so that is part of the document. I understand if that's not enough per se, and by no means am I trying to sway this conversation. I just wanted to have that information out there. Thank you.
Yeah. And may I respond, Chair?
I'm sure, yeah.
I, I think, thank you for making that point. And completely understand both the, Troy, thank you for that example, because I think it's important. To me, agreed that it's because of mixed use zoning, right? And that it's going to be everywhere, and it's, that's great. But we're not addressing the missing middle. We're not addressing the types of fourplexes, eightplexes, you know? We're not addressing that missing middle. So totally a complete agreement with what you're both saying. But I think there's this missing middle that doesn't necessarily, is not, may not necessarily have workforce or affordability. I think, what would the density bonuses be if, there is no workforce housing, but it is obviously near transit? So does that, what's the go-to from 35?
In order to activate the transit bonus, you have to provide the workforce housing. So it's, you provide the workforce housing to get to 50 dwelling units per acre, and then if you just happen to be in a transit area, which most of the city is, it automatically jumps up to 65. So it's sort of a, there's, you can't get to that 65 without providing that workforce housing.
And that's what I want to highlight for the public. That, yes, we need affordable housing. Yes, we need mixed use everywhere. Yes, we need, but this is our opportunity to think even bigger and think to, what can we do about that missing middle? And other areas are doing it, right? This is not, this is not coming out of, you know, so.
So would you think, Commissioner Barba, since we're having discussion, I assume it's okay, would this change of the MU zone from 35 to some other base be?
I think that would be helpful. MU1 to 50, and I think that would be helpful.
So a couple other thoughts I had, just in response to, to your comments, that, again, so I'll echo everything that Commissioner Barba said, but add on that, you know, in, in MU1, I think I, these are kind of back-of-the-envelope calculations, that like 50% of the lots are, the size of those are smaller. And that, like, like 10 units or smaller developments under 35 dwelling units per acre would be on 91% of lots in MU1. So most of MU1 is these, is those smaller lots. And I appreciate that there are real opportunities for a lot of affordable housing on these bigger lots. And that's, that's so, I think that's so important. And to get, to get to the missing middle, I think that there are, you know, even if it is just, you know, they could build three units under 35 dwelling units per acre, but under, you know, 50, they could build four. That might be the difference between feasibility and not for 100 parcels or something. And then that's 500 more units. Then you're not, you're not going from one more unit per parcel, you're going from zero units, when it's not feasible, to, you know, five units per parcel, or whatever it is. And, and I think that that's interesting, because, you know, these numbers aren't a science, I don't think. And for certain definitions of the word "science." But, you know, those, there are examples where we can see what density looks okay, and, and, and could be, could be the difference between visibility and not for more small complexes, that one of the goals of, of the general plan, according to the general plan, is not to concentrate stuff in certain areas, is to spread out from, you know, neighborhoods that are, that are more disadvantaged to other neighborhoods, to not, you know, just be, you know, I'm excited about the 100% affordable projects that we're seeing, but they're also right next to the freeway. It'd be nice to have, you know, more housing that's, that's not, that's not there. So, yeah, I, I won't say anything more about, about that particular subject. If, if we can get other thoughts about kind of this, I have other comments on other elements of the, of the general plan, but maybe we could just stick with land use. If anyone else has anything to say about density or aligning zoning code with, with land use, or if there's another recommendation on land use that I'm missing that, that people want to talk about, we can go to, start with Commissioner Menthee.
Well, thanks. I'm not comfortable changing the definition of mixed use 1 at this point, because as we've just heard- Because as we've just heard Troy explain, these numbers can get real big, real fast. What we're really doing is talking about imposing a different zoning, right? Really talking about making it all MU2, or that's what you're really talking about doing. And for us to do that, sort of here from the day as a recommendation, I think a lot more work would need to be done with the community to figure out where that belongs. And I also think we're missing just how revolutionary some of these changes are. You know, the old map, the current map, not only was it pointed out that huge swathes of it are not available for residential housing, but it's really a huge change in our commercial districts that's being proposed. It's, the picture that we saw of a few units on Washington, there are a few places in Culver City where you currently have large streets and this kind of housing. But there's an awful lot of it that's just, you know, commercial one-story all the way down the line. And by changing that to mixed-use, we are making a huge change. So I would not be supportive of doing that unless I had some much better reasoning from staff as to how that's going to work and why we would choose a different number.
If I may, just to add to this conversation. One of the things to keep in mind is the environmental study that we're doing. And we are working to meet a deadline of October 15th. And doing an increase in density along the corridors such as this would require us to sort of recalibrate our model, rerun, traffic impacts, air quality, noise, things of that nature, which are all doable, their time and money. And again, we do have a deadline, and making a change like this would potentially jeopardize meeting that deadline. Just wanted to add that to the conversation.
If I could add to the last point about aligning the general plan and the zoning code. My impression from staff's comments is that the Inglewood Oil Field's kind of the one place where this continues to be a bit divergent. I know a settlement was recently signed. I'm okay with leaving that to council at this point, because I think that's an area where there's a lot of, there's a lot more that has to be done. It's not simply reconciliation of a, it's not simply reconciliation of an error. There's a reason that was chosen to be that way. And I have personal experience litigating before planning commissions, dealing with these mismatches of zoning codes and general plan updates. And usually, I've actually never seen a rationale as decent as this one for leaving it in place for a little while longer.
Commissioner Barbara, do you have anything to add to the two subjects on land use?
I will say that, in the end, this is all going to be decided by council. I think we all understand that. And what I am suggesting is a recommendation to consider increasing density there. And completely understand Commissioner Menthee's comment about doing that without feedback. I don't think, if we're talking about base density and the bonus densities and everything that happens, I don't know how much community engagement has been done on that. Their way, like specifically. I don't think the community understands what five versus 50. Unless, I mean, because it's very, it's challenging to go from per acre to units for most of us. And I do, I will, just going back to a recommendation or suggestion that Commissioner Menthee made, I would, I think it would be great to have some kind of rubric between those two, so people understand where it went, I mean, sorry, where it was and where it's going in some translatable way. I still would love to make those two recommendations that.
Thanks. Vice Chair Roman?
Nothing to add. I just, I'm in the Commissioner Barbara camp on this one. When you look at the map and where MU1 is, like, it is the only opportunity for that to happen. You know, if you start to think about, okay, well, if it's an edge and then it's something else, well, the city stops after something else. We have that one parcel off of like two or three of the only major thoroughfares that go through the city of Culver City, that where you would want a real, you know, mixed-use corridor to happen. So I think, you know, if you don't do it there, you are pushing more density to where people might have even more issue of having the density, right? So I completely agree.
Commissioner Carter?
Nothing to add, but I also think we should do that recommendation. I'd just like to, I'm just amplifying that point. Thanks.
I won't speak too much longer on this, but one thing to add on the kind of community input point, I think it's interesting what you said, Commissioner Barbara, about, you know, what the public's understanding of this. I feel like I was paying attention pretty closely, and when I first dove into this stuff, I saw, well, this commercial general designation is changing to mixed-use designation. Well, that must mean that there's housing that's allowed there that wasn't allowed before. And it took really kind of understanding, some of the intricacies, to understand that it isn't that different. You know, that speaks to, you know, the challenge of community engagement, actually getting people to understand this process. And I'm not saying, I guess, that people are fully informed of like this kind of potential for this kind of change. But, yeah, I think the idea that this is a, you know, this giant, long stretch of Washington that goes from one end of our city to the other, used to not allow building housing, and now it does, bull's baked into it for me. And then diving into it, you know, well, maybe it's not allowing as much as you'd think just by looking at the designation. From here, I do have a bunch of feedback on the other elements. Does anybody else? If not, then, you know, we can resolve this issue, I can give my feedback, and then if other people have comments. But I don't think that on the other elements, we're going to be making this kind of formal recommendation. Is there anyone who disagrees with that?
No. I mean, I do not disagree.
Okay.
I had one, just.
Yes, please.
On the greenhouse gas element. I think there should be more focus by the city manager for a staff position as a sustainability manager for the city of Culver City. There's a lot of things in there that I agree with, but when it says "city manager" as the responsible party, you know, John Akbar is a busy guy, and I think that him being responsible at the highest level means it doesn't get done. So that's my comment there.
Thank you. So on those two recommendation points, kind of summary recommendation, I heard a majority of the commission, but, I don't know, do you need a vote? Do you feel like you have direction on the land use element, at least in terms of what the planning commission wants to recommend?
Yeah. So my understanding, looking at increasing those 35 dwelling unit per acre densities in the MU1 to something more substantial, and then also looking at fixing the reconciliation between the land use map and the zoning map for the Inglewood Oil Field. Okay, got it?
I don't know if it's necessary to vote or not, but I definitely would like my opposition to be recorded.
Thank you. Okay. And I will try to move quickly through my comments on other elements. So, like I said earlier, I was really kind of energized by seeing this equity statement at the beginning, and particularly about SB 1000 priority neighborhoods. These are the, you know, communities that are identified as, you know, maybe disadvantaged in some ways, and that's required by state law for us to identify those communities and kind of center them in the general plan process. And it kind of threw out, you know, attention is paid to those communities, but there were two areas where I thought there could be some more emphasis, and in particular, mobility and parks. So on mobility, I think that, you know, the mobility element kind of on transit kind of leans towards the other processes and documents that are kind of separate from the general plan. So those being the short-range mobility plan, and then the upcoming comprehensive, I'm not going to get the full acronym, but a study on the transit system and how it could be improved. And I think that what would be important there is specifically for those processes to have a focus on SB 1000 neighborhoods. Because my concern is that they're outside the general plan process. You know, you look at the short-range mobility plan that we currently have, and it doesn't account for those neighborhoods specifically. I mean, it talks about like Fox Hills, for example, but it's not looking at them as neighborhoods that need attention for these specific reasons. And I would love to see it in like, in a policy or an implementation action, to have that part of those two processes, the comprehensive analysis and the short-range mobility plan. And I think that, you know, specifically on some of this stuff, you know, you see in Fox Hills as an SB 1000 neighborhood, it's got great connections at the Fox Hills Transit Center. But that is kind of an island compared to the residential areas of Fox Hills, the people that live there that make up the SB 1000 neighborhood. How does that connect with like transit? You know, is that like a circulator that goes through the neighborhood and gets them to that Transit Center? How does it connect by bike? I feel like those connections aren't there. It's a pain to walk from the residential areas to that Transit Center. And, you know, so that, I think, could use improvement. And I saw the same thing in the West Washington area. So this is another SB 1000 neighborhood that is basically Washington Boulevard. So this is kind of similar to the MU1 stuff we're looking at. And, you know, there's a bus that runs along it. It's a giant wide street that's not fun to walk on. So there's, you know, what can be done? There, I thought, you know, there's a great policy in the mobility plan on working with other agencies. And I would love to see real specificity about, I don't know if you want to call that West Washington specifically or SB 1000 neighborhoods, but that, because it is just this stretch of street that is sandwiched by LA City on both sides, is, I think, the perfect opportunity. Because, for example, another one of the policies is about connections to Biona Creek and the Biona Creek Bike Path as being essential. Well, if you live on Washington Boulevard and you want to get down to the Biona Creek Bike Path, you have to go through the city of LA. And the city of LA recently had one initiative called Connect Del Rey to make a connection there. And I don't think Culver City was involved in that. And we should have been. So I think that a real direction to look for those opportunities, that's especially where it's important, I think, to be looking to LA DOT, which was doing that project, LA Metro, where it, you know, where it makes sense. And then the last thing on mobility and SB 1000 neighborhoods is, I think, walkability. You know, you mentioned in the text of the mobility element that there are missing sidewalks on Bentley Avenue, for example, which is an SB 1000 neighborhood. But there's nothing to, no, I don't think I saw a specific policy about sidewalks or an implementation action. It'd be great to just say, our goal is to put sidewalks where there aren't sidewalks. Or, you know, I know that like some other cities have programs requiring you fix the sidewalk in front of your house when you sell it, or that kind of thing. I don't know about the exact details of what could be done, but some kind of program to like, put sidewalks where there aren't, fix broken sidewalks where they are, I think would be, I don't know. More about walkability in SB 1000 neighborhoods, I think, would help. Because when you look at the pedestrian network map, you know, you see, you look at the SB 1000 neighborhoods, and they're like, a bunch of schools and no active transit corridors. And I felt something missing there in terms of the analysis. Whereas like, again, I think that you all did a great job of really following the state law on that and interweaving it throughout. The last thing I'll say on parks, and I kind of, some of the comments are similar, because I think connections to the parks are important. Because it mentions in implementation action, PR5, bike and pedestrian connections to open space. I think that it should reference SB 1000 neighborhoods specifically, and in addition to bike and pedestrian transit connections, just to kind of close that loop between, you know, how are these folks going to get to the parks? Because, you know, if you're in West Washington, you're in Fox Hills, it's going to be difficult for you to get to the two biggest parks in the city. They're not well-connected right now. And that was all I wanted to say about that. Any other comments on general plan before we move forward?
I did not, obviously my comments on that, but I really do like the way you're connecting the need to address SB 1000 with other ways and other agencies that should be involved. So I would support kind of making that recommendation. And in regards to, I think it's called the safety element, sorry, I'm just taking it off the top from memory, the one that addresses climate change, oh, greenhouse.
Greenhouse gas and.
Yeah.
Element, yeah.
There's also, it says, the safety element evaluates and mitigates the risk of climate change and associated natural hazards. And I think that one and the greenhouse, it's empty, and the greenhouse gas element, I would second that recommendation to have, you know, if it's a staff member, designate it like sustainability plan, a sustainability.
Chief Sustainability Officer.
Yeah.
Other cities like ours.
Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, they all have them.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
If I may, and I think it's connected to the, I know zoning code is up next, but I am curious, I've heard a number of comments now about public engagement, and I can tell you the staff and the consultants, no more than anybody else, wants as much and as early as possible public engagement. And since I have been here, we have followed those traditional routes in terms of notifications. So that is, that is on the city website, that is all forms of social media, that is to all of our email lists, it's publications and newspapers, it's meetings specifically for particular neighborhoods who have an interest in the general plan. It's online, it's in person. So if there's any other thoughts that you have that you could help me and us do, I am more than, and we are more than willing to entertain those. You know, I know other places I've been, we've tried to do more in terms of pop-up and, you know, quote-unquote, meet people where they are, be it, you know, outside a plaza, or at a bus stop, or, you know, that type of thing. I do think that has a limited response rate, just because people are busy and doesn't always catch everybody. But I would be curious, if there's anything that we're not doing, then, you know, now's the time for us to consider it. So I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My, it was more an observation than a criticism, you know.
I didn't take it as a criticism.
Okay. I hear you. And I think, I mean, I'm not a public engagement expert, but thinking of things like, you know, there's a lot of people at the steps at all hours, like, what if there was a little tent? a little tent there, you know? I mean, that seems like, since you mentioned it, that resonates with me, but it misses the SB 1000 neighborhood that's down Washington and Lincoln, right? And it's unfortunate when you think about, you know, when we debate a lot of things, the voices come from the neighborhood association and things like that. There's not much of an association for the apartment dwellers on Washington Boulevard, you know, unfortunately. So, I mean, that's kind of two thoughts that came up, but I wish I knew something better. I think we welcome any ideas from you and the consultants as well, but it's just an observation of like, wow, it's too bad, we've been doing this for a really long time, there's 40,000 people in the city, and less than 200 people have really ventured input from the public, you know, and that's just disappointing, yeah.
I will say, I think, schools are schools, and I know that the city and the school district is a different entity, but if there's some kind of collaboration in, I don't, I'm thinking super basic, but like, get a bouncy house so people can bring their kids, and you do a morning, you know, and then you provide coffee and donuts, and maybe you would get some, and I'm specifically thinking La Biona, which my child does not go there, but I know it is near a lot of the potential impacted area, right? And I think you could do that in a couple of schools, in all schools, or, you know, and I know that it's resource-intensive of money, but I'm just thinking, what would be low-cost and could possibly get you some turnout? Hot chocolate for the kids, donuts, and, you know, and something simple. But no, I don't have any genius. I know that there was also, once upon a time, there was discussion about an online kind of feedback, you know, but I know that those are also not well contributed to, so.
Yeah, I'll just say, just second on the, I mean, my kid goes to La Biona, but, you know, that school serves that entire tale of West Washington. And you ride, when you ride that bus in the morning, you meet everybody who lives on that corridor that's going to school.
Thank you. You know, as we move through this process, you know, there's clearly a number of opportunities from a public hearing standpoint for public input, so this is more to make sure that that notification gets out there, and that we're, you know, trying to augment, you know, as much as possible our communication effort when these, you know, ultimately when these decisions are going to be made. So I appreciate your input. Thank you.
I mean, I will note that when this, we had the housing element and things going on earlier, and there were discussions about whether or not the public should be notified about changes to R1 zoning, decisions were made to not make that very visible. And, you know, I can get 300 people here, just wave a red flag and say we're going to change their housing sort of, and people will show up. That may not be the kind of engagement we want, but you can certainly get people to be engaged by scaring them, and that happens. That's the thing that we have not done. We've had a lot of very mild communications about the general plan, and I think you're going to have trouble getting a lot of people interested and excited. Fortunately, at the last minute, people will show up, right? This is what's going to happen at some point over the next six months, probably when it's really, really, really late, people will start saying, wait a minute, my house, and then, then they start to show up, and then there are discussions. I did want to just step back a second and say about the sustainability officer. I appreciate the desire to do that. I'm reluctant to have us recommend that city manager hire anybody, like, but to make what decisions he or she wants to make about their own staffing, you know, that's a couple hundred thousand dollars that I'm not sure I feel the need to spend it, so I just want to say that while we're still on that subject.
Okay. I think we are, you've heard all you need to hear from us on this item. Okay. Then with that, we can move to A2, receive an update on the draft zoning code framework for implementation of the draft general plan, and discuss and provide comments as appropriate. Can I please, I invite a brief staff report.
Thank you, Chair Jones. At this time, I'd like to introduce the other team that we're working with at Raimi and Associates. They are the team that's putting together our zoning code update, again, to be the implementing tool for the general plan and everything we were just looking at and discussing. So today, we have joining us Alessandra Lundin and Simran Malhotra. Let them go ahead with the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Simran Malhotra, and I'm very pleased to be here today. I'm going to walk you through the, let me make sure this works, all right, through where we are with the zoning code update, and begin to discuss the high-level framework that we have prepared so far to get your input at an early stage of the zoning code update, and also share the zoning code map that has been prepared. And then we'll go into a little bit more detail about the high-level development standards that accompany all the different zones that are being proposed to be consistent with the general plan. So as Troy mentioned earlier, as the public draft of the general plan was being prepared, Raimi and Associates was hired to update the zoning code so that the general plan and the zoning code could be adopted concurrently, and there would be no gap in the effective, either document being effective when they are finally adopted. So as a part of the work we've been doing so far, we have analyzed the public draft general plan, the policies within it, the action items that are within it, and see how they impact the zoning code, and what aspects of the zoning code need to be updated. So the overall purpose of our project is firstly to make updates to be entirely consistent with the general plan, to implement the general plan policies, implement the land use designations that are in the general plan, land use element, and ensure that the development standards that are within it allow for the vision of the general plan to be implemented. Another aspect of our work is related to the whole slew of state laws that have gone into effect in the last several years that impact the zoning code. Some of these relate to how projects, especially residential projects, are approved, and they also relate to the timeframes within which those projects are approved. We have deadlines, statutory deadlines related to the housing element implementation, I think Mark mentioned earlier about October 15th, '24, which is the three-year period after the housing element adoption that the city is required to meet. That's an important deadline for us. And in terms of the larger vision in the general plan, we are moving away from single-use commercial and industrial uses to allowing and expanding residential uses across the city. And this is a very significant change that the zoning code is, will be addressing. So the zoning framework that I and my colleague will be describing here today includes how the new zoning districts align with the general plan land use designations, how they relate to the existing zones within the city, what are the high-level uses within each of those zones, and some of the higher-level development standards such as height and densities. As we go through this process, we will develop, continue to refine what the rest of the development standards that will be included in the code update. These will include setbacks, step backs, et cetera. There's a separate project that's also ongoing which relates to design standards, objective design standards, that will be also aligned with the work we are doing that's being done with, by another consultant team. And then, of course, we have the draft zoning map. In the general plan discussion, there was a mention of there are certain inconsistencies in place right now between the general plan and the zoning code. And besides the Inglewood Oil Field issue, at the end of this process, we expect the two maps to be entirely consistent with each other. So this table shows the new zones and which general plan designations they are implementing. So as you can see, there is a one-to-one correlation for the most part. There are state laws, especially the Housing Crisis Act and SB 330, which requires that the maximum density allowed in the general plan is what's allowed by the zoning code. So for that reason, we have a one-to-one match for most of the, for all the zones here, except for a couple of exceptions. The mixed-use corridor one is being implemented by two zones, mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use one. And the difference there is just a different set of uses, and we'll get into it in a little bit more detail later on in the presentation. Similarly, mixed-use medium is implemented by two zones, mixed-use downtown and mixed-use medium, and that is to maintain the unique character of downtown as in the current downtown This map, and it's a little bit hard to see, but shows the new zone, new draft zoning map. There are 18 zones and four overlays. This is also available on an interactive ArcGIS online map where you can examine each parcel within the city, what the existing zoning is, what the proposed zoning might be, the existing general plan designation, and the public draft general plan designation. All of these are available online at the link provided on the screen. A little bit more detail about the overlays. Currently, there are six overlays within the city, and four of these will continue to, will remain as is without any changes. Those are the first four listed in the column on the left. The two overlays are being recommended for removal. The first one is the commercial zero setback overlay. All parcels that currently fall within this overlay are within the MU1 and MU2 land use designations. And instead of using an overlay, some of the requirements of this overlay are being integrated into the base zoning, so that makes it easier for planning staff to implement at the counter. We don't need an additional overlay when those requirements are part of your base requirements. The second overlay that's being recommended for removal is the East Washington Boulevard overlay. The East Washington overlay, currently the zoning in those parcels is, has a base zoning of either commercial general or industrial general, but the overlay limits those permitted uses to more, to more neighborhood commercial-type uses, so it amortizes these higher-intensity commercial and industrial uses. And similar to the commercial zero setback overlay, we are recommending just incorporating those uses in the base zoning for this area, and not, and then hence no longer needing an overlay. As we were preparing the draft general plan, and in order to ensure one-to-one consistency across the board, with the exception of the Inglewood Oil Field, we identified four, five different areas where we are recommending changes to the public draft general plan. The goal is so that these, the reason for these changes is to ensure consistency with existing uses, with an eye towards what's likely to develop, and the compatibility of the allowed uses within the surrounding context. So I'll go over these briefly. The first is the Costco site, which currently has auto-related uses. It's got a tire center, a gas station, et cetera, and the mixed-use medium zone wouldn't allow for those uses as standalone, so we are recommending a change to MU2 designation, which would then allow the zoning to be consistent and those uses to continue. Similarly, the area near Venice and Sepulveda and 405 freeway also has a concentration of auto uses, and for a similar reason, is recommended to change to MU2. The parcels around the 90 and the 405 interchange have industrial uses, and a recommendation here is being made to change the general plan designation from MUM to MUI, or the MU Industrial designation. Again, those sites are less likely to rev up as residential in the short term, and that would allow the industrial uses to continue without becoming non-conforming. The density, though, is still maintained at 65 units to the acre in either designation. The Sentinela Corridor parcels have auto storage uses and auto uses again, and these are adjacent to auto dealerships, and the change in designation would allow those uses to continue. And the final change is to correct a minor error in the Civic Center area where the change is to match what's existing, and it would change to an institutional designation in the general plan. And with that, I will ask my colleague Alessandra to walk you through the details of the various zones.
Thanks, Simran. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Alessandra Lundin. As Simran mentioned, I'm going to walk through some more details on the zones. So the table that you'll see on the next few slides provides an overview of all of the zones, their corresponding general plan designations, and high-level development standards, including density, FAR, and height. So the following shows the proposed residential zones in the city. As you can see, and Simran mentioned, there's a one-to-one correlation with the general plan designations. And generally speaking, the R1 and the R2 zones are staying the same, they're not changing. We are proposing some minimal changes to the low-density multifamily zone, increasing it from 26 to 29 dwellings to acre to 35 dwellings per acre, and increasing the height by two feet. And this low-density multifamily zone, that's where you're going to find a lot of your missing-middle housing types, like triplexes and townhomes and the like. And then the medium-density multifamily zone generally aligns to the city's existing RHD zone, and it's getting increased from 29 dwellings per acre to 50, and it's moving from 40 to 48 feet in height, and that's to accommodate that higher density. And then lastly, there is the high-density multifamily zone, which is a new zone at 70 dwellings per acre and 56 feet in height. And hopefully I'm doing this right. There we go. So as Simran mentioned, the key shift with the proposed designations in the general plan is moving away from standalone commercial and industrial districts, and moving towards mixed-use zones across the city. And I'm going to cover the mixed-use zones on the next two slides. So you'll notice that the draft general plan and the zoning include, oh, sorry, this is just a note on FAR, but basically, the general plan and the zoning now include floor-area ratio. This is new, the city did not previously use floor-area ratio, and we're doing this because FAR is generally a standard measurement for regulating the intensity of non-residential development, and it's used by many nearby cities as kind of this standard. FAR and density are additive, so you can do both the maximum non-residential FAR and the residential density. However, it's unlikely that you would actually be able to maximize both. However, it's unlikely that you would actually be able to maximize both on a parcel, given other development standards such as height restrictions. And then, again, generally, for the mixed-use zones, heights have been increased to accommodate the increased densities and intensities from the general plan. On this slide, you'll find the proposed mixed-use corridor zones. So we're proposing two new implementing zones that fall within mixed-use corridor one in the general plan. So that's mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use corridor one. They have the same density and height standards at thirty-five dwellings per acre and 2.0 FAR for non-residential uses and a maximum height of fifty-six feet. The key difference is, and Simran touched on this earlier, is mainly in their allowed uses. So the mixed-use neighborhood zone generally corresponds to the city's existing commercial neighborhood zone, which only allows kind of those small neighborhood-serving retail uses, whereas mixed-use corridor one would also allow some more general commercial uses. And then responding to some of the earlier comments on mixed-use corridor one in the general plan, we also wanted to note that there are some other standards in the zoning code, such as minimum unit sizes and ground-floor commercial requirements, that could also play a part in limiting housing development today, and we're going to be looking at those as part of this zoning update. And then lastly, I'll touch on mixed-use corridor two. So the mixed-use corridor two zone is a bit higher intensity at fifty dwellings per acre, 3.0 FAR and fifty-six feet. And again, it allows both those neighborhood-serving and those general commercial uses. And Troy talked about this a little bit earlier, but I'll touch on it again. So for instance, with mixed-use corridor one, the base density is thirty-five dwellings per acre, but with the city's existing incentives in place, you can actually go as high as potentially one hundred and thirteen dwellings per acre when you start layering some of these local incentives with the state density bonus as well. On this slide, you'll find the remaining mixed-use zones. So there's two zones that implement the mixed-use medium general plan designation. That's mixed-use downtown and mixed-use medium. So both are going to allow sixty-five dwellings per acre and 3.0 FAR. The downtown zone is generally going to stay the same as it currently is in the zoning code. We might make, need to make some changes to accommodate that higher density. And then, again, generally, you'll see that we've increased the heights to fifty-six feet to accommodate the increased density and intensity in all of these zones, per the general plan. The highest-intensity zone is the mixed-use high at one hundred dwellings per acre and 4.0 FAR, and this is mainly in the Fox Hills neighborhood. Like mixed-use medium, it will also allow a mix of multifamily residential, neighborhood, regional, and some general commercial uses and offices as well. And then lastly, many of the industrial areas of the city will be rezoned mixed-use industrial, which will now allow a mix of multifamily along with the general and medium-scale commercial office and light industrial uses. And this zone will allow sixty-five dwellings per acre and 3.0 FAR. Okay? And this table provides an overview of the special purpose zones and the corresponding general plan designations. So generally, these are staying the same with two key exceptions. So we are adding an institutional zone to implement the new institutional land use designation in the general plan. And then you will know, notice that the plan development designation, which is in the existing general plan, is going away in the general plan update, but there will still be a plan development zone in the zoning code. So included as part of the draft zoning framework, we have the draft use tables, which provide all of the uses that are permitted, conditionally permitted, and not permitted in each zone. And here on this slide, we've highlighted some of the high-level changes that we're proposing to the use tables. So because the general plan and zoning are moving away from those single-use commercial and industrial zones to mixed-use zones, we are generally allowing more residential uses by right. And additionally, heavy industrial uses such as chemical product manufacturing, welding shops, and similar uses that are not quite as compatible with residential, those are becoming non-conforming. Light industrial uses that are less impactful will be limited to the mixed-use corridor one, mixed-use corridor two, and mixed-use industrial zones. And here you can see the full list of uses that will become non-conforming, such as various types of heavy manufacturing and fabrication, large collection and recycling processing facilities, dry cleaning plants, and similar uses. And these types of uses often create fumes, noise, smells, which impact the quality of life of nearby residential areas. However, of course, existing businesses in these use categories may continue to operate within the city. And with that, I will turn it back over to Simran to talk about next steps.
Quickly, I just want to clarify as well. In the mixed-use high category, it is spread out throughout the entire city. There are, the greater downtown area has been designated as mixed-use high. There's a number of larger properties, larger shopping centers that also have the mixed-use high designation.
Thank you, Troy. Just quickly, the next steps for the zoning code with the general plan will be presenting review of the framework, zoning framework, to the City Council on February 26th. While we are continuing to prepare the rest of the, update the zoning code, the expected release for public review for the full code is in the summer, and following which, we'll come back to you for your review of it before we go, bring it for formal adoption hearings in September. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do, Chair.
Thank you. Three minutes each.
All right. Let me just switch over the screen. Okay, our first speaker is Judy Sherman. Judy is joining us from home.
From Culver City is targeting the Fox Hill area south of Slauson with the high-density designation of one hundred units per acre. To date, there are three developers whose proposals total seventeen hundred and nine units, which was predictable. We are poised to see yet more. To remind you, the south side of Slauson is the densest part of Fox Hills with twenty-eight hundred units, and I strongly recommend that you propose putting the high-density designation on the north side of Slauson, which has no housing, close to public transportation, little traffic, with no nearby adjacent housing. Indeed, most people who have not been living under a rock realize that housing is needed, and I and many of the Fox Hill community realize this fact. However, it needs to be equitably distributed. It is no justification to say there will be high-density built in other areas, because those areas are not presently as dense as Fox Hills is now. Hanum is not Washington Boulevard. And for the record, comments to lower the density not included in the engagement summary were submitted. As of recent conversations with the City Council, the majority believe that there should be equitable distribution of housing, and they're the ones that can vote to lower the density designation in Fox Hills. You need, you need, you, we, I need you to highly recommend this action before the general plan is fully adopted, and as you know, there will be two more cycles of state housing requirements coming. A lower density needs to be penciled out to include actual examples of what the numbers would likely look like with density bonuses and whatever other incentives would be. Instead of making a sensible decision regarding this designation, an expedient one was made. Each area in Culver City is unique, and the mantra of building high-density all over is rigid, and at its very core lacks basic common sense, that it is scary that this decision was ever made. The city on every level of governance has been well aware of the concerns the community has had for many years regarding density. In closing, it is not lost on some members of the community, of the Fox Hill community, that this plan resulting in overloading Fox Hills in the most ethnically diverse area in Culver City is seen, is seen as a discriminatory practice. And just to let you know, there was a residential, a resident-generated petition with over one hundred and twenty-five signatures and many, many comments that really deal with all these issues of the inequity of this distribution. And I thank you for your, for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Wallace, followed by Andrew Flores.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you, oh, all right. I'm Deborah Wallace from the Fox Hills Alliance. The history of Fox Hills is as a black community within Culver City marred by the ugly history of discriminatory practice of red lighting. Since its inception, Culver City has been upheld as a paragon of white suburban idealism, while Fox Hills languished as a neglected stepsister. Even as Fox Hills evolved into a diverse enclave, its residents were barred from Culver City schools until 1984. Today, Fox Hills stands as the most densely populated area in Culver City, boasting a rich tapestry of racial and socioeconomic diversity. Yet the burden of providing affordable housing falls squarely on our shoulders. Culver City's decision to allocate the majority of mandated affording, affordable housing units to Fox Hills while we are already bursting to the seams with nearly two thousand nine hundred units of housing up here, and while sparing affluent, predominantly white neighborhoods just reeks of injustice. It's time for equitable distribution of resources. Fox Hills should not bear the brunt of meeting state requirements while other areas evade their responsibilities. Fairness demands better for Fox Hills. Be fair with us.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes?
Yes, that's it. Be fair.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Flores, followed by Kevin Brogan.
Thank you. As I was trying to look very closely at those tables, I did see the P, which I think is permitted, of housing kind of across the board. And so as Commissioner Barba spoke of missing middle, the potential in the zones that were discussed for R3 and larger, and in that table, if you looked very closely, that permitted housing ministerial, is that opportunity for missing middle, one of the, I can imagine the survey that was taken, the talk to architects, engineers, and developers definitely talked about the cost that comes with proposing missing middle and then having to come through a discretionary body. So the potential for increasing that production definitely lies within making it ministerial and having it completed over the counter. And I definitely think the two voices we just heard from Judy Sherman, Deborah Wallace kind of are indicative of the unbalanced community outreach and the suggestions I have moving forward, whether it be for the upcoming draft EIR, the matrix, and/or the specific plans for Hayden Track and Fox Hills, or to kind of center the outreach in the APA Equity and Zoning Policy Guide, as well as the APA Planning for Equity Policy Guide. Those are two well-known, well-researched, and well-regarded documents that can definitely be utilized and centered when it comes to, when it comes to community outreach and developing future plans. I definitely also want to speak to the comments that were made as when, to, that the public understands. When the draft EIR is completed, there will be a list of alternatives to choose from. And so there will be a number of alternatives, including hopefully, the lowering of that dwelling units per acre that many in Fox Hills decry. And so it then is up to the voices in the community to support the alternatives that are presented that they feel best meet the needs of their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Brogan.
Hi, Kevin Brogan, again, representing the Vickers Ranch and La Bayona group. The, I've already discussed the need for housing and the R1 designation, the oil field. I would point out that in the zoning map, and frankly, in the general plan map, the county's property is designated as open space. It is actually A2 zoning, so it's just something to keep in mind in terms of how property outside the Culver City's jurisdiction is being labeled. And finally, I would note the obvious, the Vickers property is privately owned to designated open space creates issues that I'm sure the city attorney can consult you on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Walter.
Thank you. I'll just repeat what I said earlier. I just heard the, one of the homeowners over in the Fox Hills areas talking about the density and the impact it'll have on that neighborhood. If you look at the Culver, the Fox Hill area, it's surrounded by cemeteries and hills. It's one of the lower-density areas of the city. And they talked, they had another speaker talking about affordable housing. Well, one way to create affordable housing is to create inventory, and that's what we're short of in Los Angeles, terribly short of. And the number-one way to bring down rents are to create competition. And the only way you're going to have competition if you add in units. Most of the developers today are affording, that are building market units. They're also adding in affordable units to, according to the density bonus, along with the new workforce housing density bonus. And it's going to be the only way that these developers are going to bring in the affordable housing is if they bring in the market housing. They're not public entities. These are private developers who are driven by, of course, profits and sustainability, staying in business. You don't, if you build buildings that don't do well, we see what happened to the developer in downtown who ran out of money because he, his vision was too big. Don't know the whole story on that, but all developers aren't greedy billionaires. There's people who work very, very hard to get their projects together, and they work on, particularly today, very thin margins. So I would say to the people who complain about the developers and the, the density that they bring in is that, that's what is allowed by the city and the state, and that they're having to meet the regional housing requirement, and that's the one way to do it. And I believe that the, adding the inventory that will be brought in, particularly in the Fox Hills area, will have a more positive effect of stabilizing rents and maybe not bringing them down, but would probably keep them from going up because of the competition. I strongly support that area in Fox Hills. I've spent a lot of time there, and I think it's very, very prime to become the area, a small city unto itself of housing and mixed-use projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Hillary Haran. Haran?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I, what I see lacking in this whole thing is people who actually live in Fox Hills who are making these decisions. I don't, I, and there's very little representation of diversity among the people I see. Maybe if you set up outreach or informational session in the Fox Hills Park or something, or go to the condominium complexes and try to get, get residents involved in the decision-making process. But how many, you need to start planning these things and thinking about the date of when you have these kinds of meetings and the hours. Okay, well, again, I'm Hillary Haron, I live in Fox Hills, and I, this density, density is way too much for our neighborhood, and it will definitely negatively impact us if you, if you continue pushing it. I don't understand why you just continue. I mean, I do, but there are other areas you could focus on, and we shouldn't be burdened with the full density of what you're, what you're proposing. So, thank you.
We've added.
Thank you.
It's on the street.
That is the end of our speakers.
Thank you. Commissioner Menthee?
Well, thank you. I know this is also a work in progress. There's a couple of questions. I think you started by, by noting five areas where you were going to ask for changes to the general plan because of auto uses. Y'all have talked, right? They're gonna, no? You were mentioning five areas in the general plan where you're going to request some changes in the zoning code due to maintaining auto uses. I'm just asking if that's gone through, or you have looked at that yet, or is this all yet to happen?
Yeah, we've looked at, we've implemented those changes, not in the draft that's out for the public, but on the, the examples that are on the website. So, we've, on our project website, you can go today, and on the interactive map, it has all of the changes that were shown here. And it's a change to the general plan versus a change to the zoning code.
Right. And I want to thank you all for doing that. I mean, it's non-conforming uses, I think, are something that we, we should try to avoid, unless we're trying to eliminate uses over time. So, I appreciate that. And sort of, this is in part for the public, but a certain amount for me, the 56-foot height limit is, is that in our charter or is that by referendum? Do you remember? But that's, that's solid, right? We can't do anything about that.
Christina.
Yeah.
There was a referendum that applies to certain areas of the city. The remaining areas are subject to, and all of it is codified in our municipal code, certain areas were subject to a specific referendum of 56 feet.
And that's going to remain, that's not changing as part of this plan, and that's why we see 56 feet all the way down, pretty much. Right?
Correct.
And you might have chosen a different number if you'd had an option. I'll just leave that out there. So, within the limits that we have, I'm impressed with the work that's being done so far. Zoning code, looking forward to it, you know, coming back here more fully. Thank you.
Commissioner Barba?
Hi. The, sorry, I had the same question about the height, 56 foot. But that had only applied in certain areas. It's not citywide, because in that, when they did the referendum, and, you know, Christina, if you can help me, if you can help inform me, I thought it would, it only applied in certain areas because it was addressing. And so, when it said it's all over, it's a little confusing to me.
So, at the, from what I can tell from trying to reconstruct the historical timeline, it appears that the municipal code had a 56-foot height limit in many areas of the city. The referendum imposed a 56-foot height limit on certain additional areas of the city that, at, at that point, I think it was 1989, either didn't have a height limit or had a height limit that exceeded 56 feet. So, the effect is the referendum, which was adopted by the voters, named specific zones that have a 56-foot height limit. I believe some of those zones are no longer in existence, or have been renamed, you know, through, through various renaming. Nonetheless, our, our municipal code, which is, you know, composed of ordinances that are adopted by the council, and then for the height limit, you know, the, the height limit that was imposed by the referendum, the current municipal code imposes a, you know, 56-foot or lower height limit across the board.
Can I say it back just to make sure I follow? So, basically, referendum 56 in certain areas, that council at some point made the decision to just apply that citywide. Is that a fair summary of?
It, yes, yes. The referendum applies to specific areas. The, in order to change the height limit in those specific areas, there would need to be action by the voters. The city council does not have the authority in and of itself to change the height limit in those areas that were identified in the referendum.
So, sorry, I'm just asking this because I've heard that there's inconsistencies between the areas and where there is that height limit. And because of the, I know that we're looking at like a bad printout of a, a general plan when it applied in the zones that it was referencing. Does that mean that that 56-foot height limit applies across the city now that it's written into this? I mean, I know it was always written into the code, but it was written to the, into the municipal code related to the specific zones, that some may no longer map to, you know, the same things, or the names have been redone. So, what portion of the city does a 56, do we know clearly what portions of, what blocks, what parcels it applies to?
We have, Commissioner, so we have done some preliminary analysis, so let me take a step back. The adopted housing element includes as implementation measure, an investigation of the height limit where it is applicable, and should that be revisited. So, that is an action item once we get past this, this process. So, that, that, that will take place, and that, of course, you know, ultimately could be another referendum, and it certainly would involve a engagement and communication process with the community. Keeping in mind, too, just for the community, there, they could see proposals that are higher than 56 feet, because they argue, some of the applications we actually have in the door now are higher than 56 feet, because they're including a significant amount of affordable housing, which allows them to do that, and/or on transit corridors. Our analysis right now is trying to determine, you know, the, the districts, as Christina mentioned, which have now subsequently changed to different zoning districts, and where that is applicable, and where there may be an opportunity where it's not applicable.
Okay, so it sounds like we're still, that, that is TBD.
Correct.
I mean, because I'm thinking of there are certain areas in the city that are now being, that have gone from industrial or some other designation to mixed use, and it would be a reasonable thing to explore whether or not that 56-foot limit applies, because there are places that could be.
Right, so that could take place, for example, in, as part of the planning process for the Hayden Track, which could incorporate the Jefferson Corridor because of its proximity. You know, I don't want to be too specific about it, but there are clearly areas that are along primary corridors, that are adjacent to transit, that are adjacent to the city of Los Angeles, which has higher height limits, et cetera, that, that will be all part of that process.
Okay, so this, this draft does not include that?
No.
Got it. Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Can I just ask one, just because it's on the same subject?
Follow-up.
Just, so, just to clarify then, and I think this is clear from what's written, but just to say it out loud, in the draft framework, it says heights to be finalized after site testing, maximum height not to exceed 56 feet. So, if, if in one of those zones, you say, wow, to get to 65 dwelling units, we really need more than 56 feet, we won't do it as part of the zoning code process? It'll be done maybe later, I guess? That's the way I'm reading it there, maximum height not to exceed 56 feet, even if site testing tells us we might need more than that to realize this density?
Right, so you'll notice, like you mentioned, in those zoning tables we were looking at, there's a footnote that we're going to be doing some site testing to see these densities that are proposed, all the way from 35 to 100 dwelling units per acre, how does that fit on a particular site? And currently, we're using 56 feet as our maximum height limit, and there are different options for being able to accommodate that type of density. For example, we don't have a parking requirement, right? Parking could be undergrounded to, to lower the height of a building, or parking could not be provided at all. So, we're looking at the full menu of options for how to accommodate, and that, again, is part of the restructuring of the zoning code, is how do we accommodate these new higher densities, trying to maintain that 56-foot height limit across the board. I mean, we lessen setbacks, different options that we're looking into, but the full, the full suite of options with the intent of keeping 56 feet as the maximum. Again, as Director Munzer mentioned, we're going to be looking at that height limit in the, in the initiative referendum as part of our work plan moving forward, but it hasn't been embedded in this process, just because of where we are in the process and the timelines and whatnot. So, yeah.
Thanks. Back to you.
We're only doing questions, right?
Yes.
That was it for my questions.
Okay, great. Vice Chair Roman?
I have no other question. The 56-feet thing is exactly what I was going to ask as well. I think, though, the one point I just want to make sure that I'm crystal clear on is a couple of the tables, you know, we have the units per acre plus FAR, and maximizing both of those wouldn't potentially be possible because of that 56-foot height limit. So, we're saying that our internal zoning code can't break that limit, but a state density bonus will allow breaking that limit, would require breaking that limit, because it's, okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Thanks. Commissioner Carter?
Yes. Are there, I went back and forth with the overlays. Are there any instances where R1 or R2 is eliminated or changed in any way? I didn't see any, but I wanted to make sure I didn't. No, nothing's changed. Okay, great. All right, I just want to, and then my other question is, is, well, I'm going to hold, I'm going to hold off. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thanks. I also don't have any questions, so we can go back to Commissioner Menthee for any substantive comments you might have.
I've made my comments.
Great.
The residents of Fox Hills are saying, and I think it was very unfortunate, I'm sure it was not intentional, but it was very unfortunate that we weren't able to hold a Fox Hills, you know, community meeting in Fox Hills, and then it moved to Elrincon, I think.
We did hold a Fox Hills-specific meeting as part of the community engagement process.
Oh, there was. Okay, I thought it moved to Elrincon. I thought it last May happened.
We could not, because of cost and accessibility to residents, we could not find a location in Fox Hills neighborhood, so it was at the elementary school, it was the closest we could be.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's fair. And I just said it's unfortunate, because I hear that that's where we're getting public com, written public comments, verbal public comments, where there is a sense of residents not being heard, and I would encourage to seek other opportunities so those residents feel heard. And I want to, you know, and this is amplify the comments of all the density is being added, where it's already the densest, which, that's my extrapolation of what I'm hearing, and say this zoning update is our opportunity to address it.
Thanks. Vice Chair Roman? Nothing further? Commissioner Carter?
We're sure this is enough to meet our state mandated housing goals. It's on the overview, it's, there's, is it going to be enough housing to meet the state mandate? Okay.
It's, it's, you know, the analysis we've done right now is it's significantly more than what our current RENA allocation is, but keeping in mind that, you know, a RENA allocation is an eight-year allocation, 2029, I think, the current allocation. So, we are, and we are in a general plan process, so we are planning for a larger window of time. But yes, the short answer is it does meet that requirement.
And I also want to thank some of the Fox Hills community for calling in, and it is bunched up. I mean, you can really see it on the map for high density. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Could we pull up the zoning map again, actually, please? I think, just a quick call back to the general plan, I think that the city being unable to hold a meeting with residents in Fox Hills itself speaks to kind of what these SP 1,000 neighborhoods, like, are, might be lacking in resources. But on, on the map, I think that, like, you know, we heard from several of these Fox Hills residents asking for more equitably distributing the housing, and I think that if, if we can see where it's going, I think that would be helpful. It's okay, I can, I can keep talking as, as it's pulling up. So, yeah, I think most, most of the new, so we, so we do have the, the RENA allocation that we have to meet, and if you look at this map, you know, down at the bottom, the dark, dark purple and the lighter purple is all like in the Fox Hills and adjacent neighborhoods, and that's, that's the most, the most density that's being added. If you, you know, references made to these RLD, RMD, RHD zones, so like, up at the top along the 405 in the Clarkdale neighborhood, that's, that's where that is, there's a lot of new density there, too, maybe kind of in the missing middle field. What we were talking about earlier was the MU1, which is the light pink, that's along Washington from end to end. It's in some, some other areas, too. A lot of that's in the West Washington neighborhood. So, these are the SP 1,000 priority neighborhoods that, that the state says you need to take special care with, you're supposed to have programs to, you know, improve them and not, you know, alongside a separate state mandate to affirmatively further fair housing with what we do. But the, the reason that those, those neighborhoods are where the new density is being added is because all of the yellow, the light yellow is, is R1. And three years ago, the city council said no more than four units per lot there. Just last year, the city council again said no more than four units per lot there. That's, you know, we, we at the planning commission don't have discretion to add, I guess we could make a recommendation, but I don't think we're going to, to add more density to those single-family neighborhoods. And that's kind of it. I mean, I mean, that there are the industrial areas that are getting a lot more density, too. I think that's a good, good improvement. But in terms of where this housing that we are required by the state to build has to go, a lot of the city is off limits, and where we're asking for more density is, is unfortunately in those SP 1,000 neighborhoods to a, to a large extent. Yeah, I think those are all, all my comments on this. Anyone else? Okay. Anything else staff needs from us on this item? Great.
Actually, sorry, a question that I had earlier.
Just last year, the city council again said no more than four units per lot there. That's, you know, we, we at the planning commission don't have discretion to add, I guess we could make a recommendation, but I don't think we're going to, to add more density to those single-family neighborhoods. And that's kind of it. I mean, I mean, that there are the industrial areas that are getting a lot more density, too. I think that's a good, good improvement. But in terms of where this housing that we are required by the state to build has to go, a lot of the city is off-limits, and where we're asking for more density is, is unfortunately in those SP 1,000 neighborhoods to a, to a large extent. Yeah, I think those are all, all my comments on this. Anyone else? Okay. Anything else staff needs from us on this item? Great.
Actually, sorry, a question that I had earlier just came back, if I may. How are other, and this might be a question for our RINN associates, how are other cities treating R1 and the fact that basically you can do an ADU and two accessory, two junior ADUs? Is everyone, like, are all jurisdictions that you're working, I'm sure you're working with many, are they all keeping the R1 designation?
Most cities are maintaining the R1 designation because you can not only do an ADU and a junior ADU, but you can use SB 9 to get up to four units. You can do lot splits, you can do two duplexes, you can, and then those can be conveyed separately. So you can get to a fourplex essentially on a single-family lot. The minimum standards for that, you know, you have very, you can ignore for the most part your setback requirements, the lot coverage requirements, you can get there pretty easily, and it also has an expedited process.
Got it. So they're maintaining that R1 single family. Thank you. That really saves me time of looking it up.
I would too note, on March, I just blanked out on the date, when we're going to say council, March 9th, maybe, with the APR. Okay. In any event, the first March city council meeting will be delivering our annual progress report, which shows our, our unit production, and ADUs continue to be the number-one unit producer and are still going in a good clip. I understand the point that you brought up, but they are being produced, so.
It's...
I understand.
Great. No, no, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you do a little quick math, right, an acre is like eight single-family lots or something like that, right? And if you put four units on eight lots, you get to 32 units, and that's MUN, 35 units per acre, right? So you're, you're, you're kind of there from a, as long as people understand that they can do that and are, can facilitate doing that.
Definitely true. I think it's very, very challenging for, I'm going to say, developers, investors, to see that for the cost of land in Culver City.
City does now have posted on our website, pre-approved ADU plans in three different types of, of architecture and configuration, so our hope is that, you know, that significantly diminishes the cost, so. And we're, and we're about to post our instructional, it's a accompanying instructional manual, so.
That's great. What, what outreach, I mean, is it going to go up on social media?
I want that everywhere. Everyone's asking me.
I asked for it to go on social media, and I think I was told wait for the manual to come out.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Stuff on the spot, but I think that was responsible. Yeah, for sure.
That's terrific news. That's great.
We want to amplify, I, I'm sure I would, I've been asked for my ADU plans, so like, I would have loved to amplify.
Yeah, they still just, you know, we just need a site plan to make sure you're meeting the, the state-required setbacks and such, but, you know, if you use that plan, you should be able to move forward with a, a permit.
Great. Thank you. Good news to end the item on. All right. Okay, let's, then, do we have any other public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, we do not, Chair.
Great. Any items from staff?
Since Emily unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, I'll, I'll handle the meeting schedule. So your next meeting on February 28th will be canceled, so maybe you can celebrate Valentine Day then. On March 13th, the, your March dates are tentative, but it appears we'll be meeting on both dates in March. The first one on March 13th, we'll talk about the current and advanced planning division work plans. And then on the 27th will be the density and other bonus incentives workshop. We are, I have asked Emily to see if we can maybe consolidate those. So that's TBD, but as of now, if you could hold your, your March Planning Commission evenings, that would be appreciated. As I mentioned before, the city council will be having this very similar conversation on March 26th, and the council is also meeting this Friday at 9:00 AM to review its strategic plan. That is clearly a public meeting, and that's at the Culver City Senior Center.
February 26th.
February 20, oh, I'm sorry, February 26th, city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items from staff? Great. Items from members of the planning commission?
I'll be out that second, the 27th, and, yeah, it's spring break, and we're doing a college trip with my daughter.
Fine. Any other items? Okay, then, could I please have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Menthe, second by Vice Chair Rollman. Please vote. Thank you. Motion to adjourn passes with five ayes. Meeting is adjourned at 9:30 PM.